Ms. Egan, would you take the role first?
Yes. Mr. Coughlin?
Here.
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgibbon?
Here.
Ms. Huffy?
Here.
Mr. Jackson is excused. Ms. Patterson?
Here.
Ms. Sword?
Here.
Mr. Bubine?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
President Solomon?
Here. At this point in the agenda, the board welcomes public comment. Any members of the public who wish to address the board may approach the podium and do so for approximately three minutes. I see no members of the board, of the public approaching the podium. We will therefore move to the district administrators' report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up our three newest administrators. I'd like them, give them an opportunity to introduce themselves, say a little bit about themselves, so we can officially welcome them. So, the three of you come up, their official day was the second, wasn't it? July 2nd. So, it's been just about two weeks they've been in district. So, I will turn it over to them.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Hardingerley. I'm the HR Director, and I'm coming from the State Department of Health Services in Madison, so I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Very glad to have you.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. I am Kate Allgren, and most recently, I worked in the Madison Metropolitan School District. I'm so pleased to be here.
We are very pleased to have you.
Hi, I'm Dana Shamer. I previously worked in Ryo as a middle school, high school principal, and athletic director, and I'm happy to be part of the team.
Welcome.
So, I thought I'd give an opportunity for us to officially welcome these three. We are excited to have them in the district and what they're bringing to the district, and all three of them, I have no doubt, will challenge and push us to succeed even more. So, if we can give them a round of applause to welcome them. As I indicated last week, we have now an administrative opening at the middle school. Mr. Schuman took a position as a K-8 principal in a private school in Brookfield. We wish Brian all the best. That's been a career aspiration for Brian for the last, at least, two to three years, to get into a position in elementary school. And Brian also has the opportunity to combine his interest of being a K-8 principal with his faith. If you know Brian, Brian is very faith grounded and faith oriented. So, we wish Brian all the best, and we will start the process, or we posted today to start the process, to find his replacement. And the only other thing that I had was, we currently have the Lunches for Vikings program going on, and last week, they gave out 356 lunches.
Wow, great. How does that match up with last year?
We're ahead. Last year, we were hovering probably at our peak about 175.
Wow.
So, we about doubled the lunches we're giving out.
Do you guys feel like the communication's been better?
I think the group, and I give a lot of kudos to our community and the volunteers, but they moved the locations. So, they learned last year, last year, the first year, we were at Sand Hill, Fox, and Kaganza. And throughout the year, they shifted the Sand Hill distribution site to, by the baseball diamonds at the high school, and that boosted numbers. They've now done a little bit different, and they're also going out to the...
Bayview Heights.
And so, they're constantly looking to evaluate, where is the need? And so, it's this group constantly looking at how to do it better.
Great.
The community also has refunded really well.
Yep.
There's so, very few spots still available.
Correct.
Whoever wants to...
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments? Next on the agenda then, I'm sorry, Tim.
I'm done.
Next on the agenda then is the consent agenda.
I move approval of the June 18th, 2018 regular board meeting minutes. I move approval of the July 4th, August 7th, 2018 check register, and July 12th, 2018 P car transaction reports presented. We would like to say thank you to the following individuals and groups, and move approval of their donations to the district. Donation from Stoughton Viking Wrestling Club for $20,000 for wrestling mat. From Friends of Norwegian Culture, $4,841 for Norwegian dancer travel costs. Stoughton High School Band Booster for $1,205.99 for high school marching and P band music. Dordley Club of Stoughton, $200 for choir tour expenses. Friends of Mackenzie for $153 to support Fox Prairie students. From Donna's Lindley, $25 for Margaret Larson Memorial Scholarship in memory of Rick Parkinson. And related cash donation budget adjustment for $26,424.99. I move approval of permanent professional educator contract for Valerie Crockeri, Sarah Cole, Erica Mayer, Lauren Powell, Rebecca Shipley for the 2018-2019 school year, and temporary educator contract for Paul Hanson for the 2018-19 school year only. I also move to approve the resignation of Jennifer DeRoch and Gina Holland at the end of the 2017-18 school year, and the resignation of Brian Schuman effective at August of July 13th, 2018.
The consent agenda has been moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Here.
Allison.
Why is the one position for Paul Hanson, why is that temporary?
And I'll have to go back to look at what position he is filling. For example, when we hire our mentor teachers, we hire just, we hire a one-time, or a temporary position to replace them because they won't go back into the classroom.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
Are there any other questions? I saw in the reports that we have now paid for the new band uniforms. Is that right?
Yes. So, that was, that was something that, and I give Erica a lot of credit working with Mel and working with Dan, the band director. Beginning of the year, Dan was setting out to go and start a fundraising campaign for new band uniforms, because our band uniforms were 20-plus years old. And Erica, working with them, kind of reallocating some money that way of things that we should be paying for, and band uniforms was one of them. And so, we were able to buy the new band uniforms instead of having the kids and the parents go out and fundraise for the new band uniforms.
And when do they debut?
They're in. I saw them. They look really nice. They will debut this fall for the marching band at the football games. But we are planning for Dan and some band members to come here once school starts, showing you the old uniform and the new uniform. The new uniform is literally half the weight.
That sounds nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next on the agenda are committee reports. I know that tonight, the Policy and Finance Committees both met. Allison, do you want to talk about Finance?
Yeah. Finance, we had quite a bit going on, since a lot of you had to wait to sit down. We were discussing two sets of data since we started meeting every two months. So, we were looking at May and June financials. Also, we, there was a discussion about, a discussion action item that showed up tonight about Fund 46, and I won't go into a lot of that detail right now, just because there will be quite a bit of discussion about that, I'm sure. Also reviewed our calendar for the, probably a year and a half for 2018, 19, and 2020. And then just kind of a preliminary budget for next year that is not finalized yet at this time.
Any questions for Allison? Seeing none. Tim, Policy also had tonight?
Yeah, so a number of you were there. And I will just pass this around for those of you that weren't. But our only discussion topic was, we heard Dr. Scott Brown present to us from an organization called Neola. Did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll let Dr. Onser talk a little bit about it, because he probably can articulate better than me. But from my standpoint, it's really a platform to help us better manage our policies and keep them up to date, and to save us some time and some money in terms of doing that. I am an advocate of it, because I think we spend a lot of time in reactive mode on policy, and less time being proactive, and so I think that'll help us to do that a little bit more. So, we will be bringing to the board, I believe that's the process, proposal to approve this, probably at our next meeting, or will it be a two-step process?
Yep.
We'll need to get the two-step process in place. So, I'll let others that were there chime in if they want, otherwise, I like it a lot.
I heard about this, actually. Yoli and I went to a conference Friday and Saturday in Green Bay, and I had never heard of Neola until then, but in speaking to other school board reps that were there, the ones that were using it were really happy with it. One district in particular, he was kind of handing me updates to read and stuff. He was a big promoter. There, the only real point of contention I heard from any of them was to, just a caution to make sure that we take the time to read everything, not to, not to get too comfortable, I guess, with letting somebody else just hand it to us. We need to, you know, digest it, make sure it all works for us. But it does sound like you're kind of combining with other districts throughout the state for, basically having somebody look at the constantly changing education laws in the state, which is a lot to keep up with. And I think that's primarily, you know, that's the concern we all should have, because things are changing rapidly.
Yeah, I think there was, I think there's tremendous value in having a systematic review of our policies. The presenter went out of his way to compliment the work that's been done in the district over the years in terms of developing, maintaining, and updating policies. But I think we're at the point when there is so much demand on staff time, that it makes sense to look at what vendors would have to offer us in terms of doing some of the, some of the organizational and the basic review, analysis, and update work. I agree with you, Kathleen. I think it's a very high priority that we remain actively involved in this process, and that we make sure that the policies that we have reflect our district's culture. There's some things that we're required to do by law, but there's some things also that are, many things that are choices. And what I liked about the Neola presentation was that they will help us figure out what we have to do and what we can choose to do, but what the choices, what the options are.
So, that'll be coming. Next agenda, will that be a discussion item on the next agenda?
Yeah, we'll put that right for the next. Steve is not here for facilities. I know ERC met, but it was pretty much all closed session, right, Joe?
Yeah.
We'll talk further in closed session this evening, but we've been meeting to prepare for starting bargaining and all of that happened in closed sessions, so I don't have anything I can report. I know also that at least Kathleen and Yoli went to the WASB conference in Green Bay. Did anyone else go? Did you go, Joe? Can y'all tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, well, we were able to split, there were two tracks, so we pretty much hit everything between the two of us. I know I planned to write up the notes I took, because, you know, you're writing so quickly. There was a lot of really valuable information. One of the main things that was brought up was new research into birth to three and brain development, and it was pretty extensive, but in a nutshell, every, the research shows that for every dollar invested in birth to three, there's an $11 return on that dollar, because you have fewer kids needing, you know, specialized services. And he really went into quite a bit of detail on it, and I thought it was fascinating. One thing he didn't get time to talk about is how districts can help implement that, because a lot of it is teaching parents what is most important during those formative years, so all the right circuitry gets set up. But, yeah.
Yeah, that was very interesting, because it was a school safety seminar, but they started, of course, with a health, with mental health. And I was on the two-day with Kelly and the group that is meeting for compassionate school trauma forum. And this doctor in particular, who was the one who did introduction to the whole seminar, presented all the data that was also presented with Kelly, with another group of knowledge that Kelly has also that we, so he presented all that data, and part that was interesting is, even though he didn't say, of course, much about how we can do that, that was the mention of the trauma forum and the compassion schools that we are trying to implement now. But the biggest part was after that was, how do we do with our safety in our school? They started with the safety grants, how were they awarded? And that was people from the Office of the School Safety in Department of Justice. And one of the things that they said that they awarded those funds mainly to do prevention, mainly to do prevention, and that those funds, they are expected to be used for training and for physical, I mean, buildings improvements. But interesting is, one-third of those funds are left over, and they are, they don't know exactly yet how they are going to be distributed or for what, but that second round of grants money might be coming, and most of the schools that were awarded will probably, will need to do another application, which I think, and Erica, we got to chip our ass on that. Also, the school security assessment, which I understood that is now by law, all the schools have to do an assessment, and that is, they have, they are recommending that every district attend a security assessment training, and there's one class coming in Sun Prairie. They're also recommending that the school board look at the school safety policies. And also, to have a school safety team, and the people, the key people who should be there is the school counselors, SRO, psychologists, district administrator, and facility director, among others. In a huge seminar that they didn't even share anything, because you cannot take picture, you cannot share with your kids what is happening, is dealing with digital threats, and how do we handle a threat in social media, something like that? How, what change of commands is gonna, does the district chain, not change, chain of commands, the district has set up in case of a threat? When and how do you get in contact with the police? Reported. I mean, if you have any of us, or a child, or a teacher know that something, there was a threat, or know someone is going to do a threat, how anonymously can that be reported? And there are some apps, I don't know, maybe Paul knows about those apps, that people can use to report without saying who they are. There is somebody that is going to do something, whatever it is. And also, I got a bunch of resources that they gave us to, that we can do for our internet safety processes of any kind.
And tying on to that, they also talked about, a lot of parents perceive most bullying taking place on social media now. I think it's been pretty hyped up in the news that that's, and that's certainly a threat to kids, but they said it very closely mirrors what those kids experience during a school day.
Yeah, yeah. And it was amazing that one was, even I tried to keep up with all the apps and things like that that are out there, but they are coming with so many things, and there are things that I have no idea, that apps that kids are using disguise as something educational, like a calculator, and then it's something to put pictures of whatever is in there. So, basically, the one thing that I take out of there, because we can do everything here, but it's mostly parents who have to be on top of that, is how do we educate our community? Can we, you know, by many different ways, educate our parents to, hey, this is, these are the new things that are coming out, watch out for this, or something like that? So, even though if you don't know, you, at least you will see it on the phone, for example, and say, hey, what is this? Or what are the things that we can do as parents in our house that not necessarily are going to be threatening our kids, but just be making them also aware, better citizen for the digital stuff. And the other thing is another, find ways to inform the public about the mental health things that our kids are going through, or everybody's going through. The age, the adverse childhood experiences, and how can we tell our community and our stakeholders about it? So, then when we start doing our compassionate school, and they will know why we're doing it.
Yeah, and of the two tracks we were on, Yoli went to more of the specific safety things and the internet things, and I attended more of the prevention through mental health. And that was really where the point of the early intervention came in, because once a child has experienced the certain number of traumas, it's really hard to undo. So, the earlier we can intervene in these situations and use the science to basically help kids' brains to remap the neurons that weren't completed when they needed to be, the better off all our schools will be. It was interesting.
It was very interesting.
Yeah.
Questions, discussion? So, one thing I would like to, well, not to board members, is that we do have funds set aside for board members to attend training and conferences, and to acquire resources to help us do our jobs better. All of you received tonight copies of a pair of books on the coherent governance model, which I, the discussion around that arises out of some of the issues that were surfaced in the board retreat we did, just before you joined us, Jill. But in terms of developing processes and procedures by which this board will govern itself and relate to the district and the administration of the district. And the purpose of these books is to frame up a conversation about one particular model for doing that. So, these are available. If there are other resources that you would like, please let me and Dr. Onser know, and we'll get them for you. If there's training that would be useful for you to attend, please let us know, and if there's money in the budget, we'll try and get you to that. But it's a priority for all of us that we become and stay informed about how to do our jobs, and that we bring to the table an understanding of the choices that are available to us, and a framework for discussing them. So, thank you, too, for going to that conference, and thank you for reporting back. Next on the agenda is athletic tournaments as fundraisers, and I think this is an Erica thing. Let's see, funds, I assume it's...
Yeah. It's got a money word in it. So, every year, for the last few years, we've brought this to the board in August. Essentially, it's a requirement by DPI. If we want to treat our athletic tournaments as a fundraiser, it's something that the board approves, and then we basically account for that in Fund 21, like we do other fundraising activities. Not sure why this one in particular needs board approval on an annual basis, but it does. And what that does is it allows our athletic department, as they host a tournament, they collect the gate receipts, they pay for the cost of the tournament, whether that's, you know, officials, or, you know, concessions, all those different things. But for, if it turns a profit, then they're able to use those funds to benefit all athletics. So, if it's to say it's a, you know, a football tournament game, the resources generated can be used for all athletics. So, what they do is they, they pull those resources, they try to be planful in how they want to spend those funds. And if they're looking at something like a piece of equipment or something like that, by doing it in Fund 21, they're allowed the ability to roll those funds over from year to year, to do some bigger scale planning. It just provides some more flexibility. We've always allowed them to use the profits generated, but by doing it in Fund 21, it just allows for that all-year planning.
Any discussion? Allison?
Are those funds available to them right away? Or do they... Yeah, so if they want, if there's something that they want to use and, you know, purchase immediately, they certainly can. If they want to, like I said, plan for something larger, they have the ability to do that as well.
And Mel tries to use the funds to benefit all the sports, not just one sport or the other. So, for example, if, if our ice machine goes down, because our trainer uses it, and we go through a lot of ice, not only for training, but for, you know, water and things like that, he could use the funds to buy a new ice machine, because it benefits all the sports, et cetera, so.
And he does that just from an equity perspective. I mean, if you have a softball game, you don't charge to get into a softball game. So, I mean, not, not all athletics have tournaments, and some of them that have, who might host a tournament game, don't necessarily charge the mission.
Yeah, I noticed most, many of them, if not most of them, are playoff tournaments. So, it's safe to say if a team goes further into the playoffs, there's a better opportunity for us to generate, for them to generate more profit.
Potentially. I think, and I'm, this is not my area of expertise, but I think sometimes it depends on facilities, too. Like, if you have the right facility, you might host a game that isn't even your team playing. So, sometimes we do that as well, and I know we've had the opportunity to do that in recent years, because we've done a pretty nice job of maintaining and keeping up our facilities. So, but yes, you know, if, as teams are more successful, sometimes that does generate more opportunities.
Well, we started that last year, right?
Yes.
Is when we started that?
Did you? I think it's, this might be the third year.
Is it the third year?
I, I think so.
I have a really bad long-term memory.
Mine's getting worse, but...
Well, at least I remember last year. Do you have an idea about how much in average we get in the year?
I do not.
No.
But I can look that up before we bring this back next week.
I'm just curious.
I think it varies from year to year, and, but we, I'll see if we can dig that up before our next meeting.
And as Erica said, Mel also tries to make sure the WIA knows that we're willing to host, you know, maybe Division IV basketball. Where it's not our team, it's not any of the teams around us, but we're at neutral site and we'll host. And so the WIA gives us a check to run the tournament. And sometimes our revenues out, you know, exceed our expenses, and so it's allowed to use that excess money to put into this fund.
And I assume sometimes they don't?
Budgeting process.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
This will come up for a vote at the next meeting. Next on the agenda is the academic standards issue. And this is a discussion action item, so we should begin the discussion with a motion. Assuming anyone who wants to make a motion.
I move to adopt the academic standards for the 2018, 2019 school year as presented.
A second.
If you remember, this was what Judy presented to the board in June before she left. We have to annually notify parents of the academic standards. So the board has to adopt those standards at the very first meeting it has in July. Hence why this is at tonight's meeting.
Is there any discussion?
I had a question about the test code. We have the world language, Spanish and German. Maybe my question is probably not the best one for this, but I'm just, I don't understand. Why do we have German? I mean, is it a requirement that we have certain languages?
No, it's, which is an excellent question of why we have German as far, as opposed to French or...
Or Norway.
Right. The only answer I have is this has traditionally been the two languages that most school districts teach, are Spanish and German. German is becoming more and more, Germany's becoming more and more central for financial institutions and banking and things like that.
Really?
But that doesn't mean to say, you know, at one point, and I don't know if it still is, French was the most widely spoken language in the world. More people spoke French than anything else or had a familiar. So there's no, there is no state statute that requires certain languages, nor is there a state statute that requires languages at all.
So I'm looking at, or thinking about our vision, mission, and thinking about preparing our students for the world that's coming. And I don't see German as a language that is really one that, you know, is gonna be spoken. I see Chinese. Spanish is a language that at least in the United States, spoken everywhere. So I don't know, I'm just like, is anything that we can do to look at a language that really is gonna be more useful for?
And we can, we can, and I'll have to look back to when the last program review of our world languages are. I mean, that's something we certainly can look at. I know some of the other languages, it's hard to find a certified instructor. So it's hard to find somebody in, to teach Arabic. It's hard to find somebody that teaches Chinese, et cetera. So some of it is not able to find qualified personnel. I know some of the bigger districts, Madison and some of the other ones, have an easier time. But that doesn't mean that we can't look to offer some of that. That's not to say that we can't do another program review. I know we did a program review of our world languages, and I'll have to touch base with Kate, because Judy has those files of when we did those. But those are questions we can certainly look at. At this point in the year, with students enrollment and everything, is that something we can, we can change now, but it's something we can certainly look at.
Sure, yeah, I'm not expecting.
If that's what the board wishes to do.
But probably with a new strategic plan coming, probably something that can be discovered there or something? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fascinating question. I've wondered about the German for a while as well. My two younger kids spoke German.
My son speaks German.
But it does, it has struck me as an odd choice. I've never understood why we do it. Allison, did you also have a question?
Any of the, sorry, I had to, I got myself all roped into what she was saying here. Any of the new changes, the academic standards? Are these different? Most of them look very much the same.
Didn't we what?
Is this the first time we've had coding standards on it?
Yes, yes. Everything else, that's new. Everything else is the same as...
Because next generation science.
Right, that was the same as last year.
Okay.
So the only thing different on these are the coding standards.
And financial.
Yeah. And you're right, and some financial literacy ones in there.
Anything else?
Are there any other standards out there for the arts that are more specific to each particular art? When I'm looking at the National Court Art Standards, it's hard to tell whether they're rigorous or not. I mean, they're sort of so broad, they cover all of the arts. You know, there's nothing about music specifically, there's nothing about visual art specifically. And it almost seems like we just, it's just a standard that, maybe it's the only standard that there is.
I mean, we try to look at, we try to look at the state or national standards when we look at doing our curriculum and what, when we hold that off. So again, I can't speak directly for that one. We're in that transition between Judy and Kate, but that's something we can, you know, look at, give some information back to you.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable using it for now. I'd just be curious to know whether there is, is anything else that, you know, maybe feel a bit more discipline-specific.
How often do we do program reviews?
We do, we've done one every year, every year. So I know we've done in the past, I mean, this year we did 4K. We've done library media. We've done science. We've done music. World language, we did world language recently, so. So we usually try to do one every year, every other year we do one. Just in that, that's that process where we bring in people from the outside to look at our programs, to give us feedback on how we can strengthen it.
Is there something on deck for the next program review?
I will have to look. I don't know if we had scheduled one for this year or the year after, but I'll have to look.
I actually had met with Judy.
Yeah.
Just to get information on that. And she said she'd be leaving information for her replacement.
Right.
But on the human growth and development.
Yeah, that's something we look at every other year, every third year, regardless. We're required by state to do that.
Just to possibly relieve concerns about, Joey, your specific concerns about the core art standards. If you flip through a lot of the other standards that are presented in that page, they're typically pretty broad. They don't get into really curriculum-specific. They don't, I think the goal of them is not to mandate curriculum, but more just as broad of concepts as you can get. So it's, when I was picking through the rest of the standards, I saw similarly broad goals for social studies or science, so.
Is that a good thing?
Well, I, these standards aren't curriculum.
I tend to think it is. I mean, I think that you don't want to mandate, you know, specific ways of teaching or curriculum stuff. And I think that it's about more designed a little more broad from my experience, to allow for a little control autonomy within the framework of our standards.
But you feel like they're not so broad as to not be useful to the people that are using them?
I mean, I think you would have to ask them how useful they are.
I'm asking you because you've been.
Yeah, I find them useful. I would like them, I like them a little broader, and so it allows the district, it allows the curriculum director, whoever, to have a little flexibility in how things are implemented.
Other questions or comments?
So we have these standards. Do we have like a report card for how we meet or exceed these standards then that comes out every year?
The state test is aligned to these standards in some of the areas. We don't have, with some we have assessments, some we don't. So for example, the arts, there's not standardized assessments statewide or across the board. We also use STAR testing, which helps us with some of the other subject areas. But so some of the standards, we do not have a uniformed assessment of it. But we use it to create our curriculum and our targets of where the students should be. And so the formative assessments and the high schools working on common assessments for it. And it's aligned to the standards and the targets.
Because I'm thinking if we are meeting and exceeding the standards, that would be a good key off to get out to the community on a regular basis.
I have a question about STAR testing. Are there other, I know that we use that in the district, but are there other tests that, and I don't know how about, you would go about changing that or anything, but like are there other tests that could be taken instead of STAR testing? Because I know on the STAR test, I've used it for the past three years, and I've gotten the same questions. You start to memorize the questions, and I just don't think that...
And actually the...
The data that's being presented. Yeah. But I would just think that taking a test where you get different questions each year would show better data.
There's STAR, there's MAPS, there's some other ones. When you get to high school, when you get to ninth, 10th grade, you start to cap out on STAR and the MAPS. So it's more beneficial for your K8s. It's a stretch into high school. So yeah, that's very feasible in high school. We continue to look at high school of what do we use? So we've had conversations of, do we not use STAR at the high school, but do we use the, you take the explore and the plan, and can we pull the data from that instead of? So we are having those conversations, but it's very feasible that you have kind of capped out on that, which is one of the downsides of any of that. You get to the high school and you start to cap it.
Okay.
It's very, it's very good for especially K6, K7, K8. We start to see a little bit more of that, but the younger grades, and I think we start STAR testing second grade. And so the younger grades, it actually helps, because it gives you different questions depending on how you answer the question.
Okay, gotcha.
So if you're getting the same questions, it must be really good.
Yes. Or really, really.
I expect, I don't know which one. Other questions or comments? Jolie?
The financial literacy that is new this year, right?
Right.
Is it mandatory? I mean, I think it's great. I think it does something that we should always know. Everybody should have a knowledge of that. But is it mandatory or?
There's mandatory things in the state statutes of teaching financial literacy, and when do you incorporate them?
No, I'm glad to see that there.
Other discussion? Shall we call a question? All in favor of the motion to approve the standards as presented? Please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The next issue on the discussion action items is the 2017, 2018 Fund 46 transfer. Fighting. So Allison?
So what this is, and those of you around the board, I know we did this last year. And please interrupt if I'm not getting this right, Erica, okay? We have, just with a number of budget items, we try to stay within 2% of our budget, which puts us at about, you know, about $800,000 is, is that too, is that kind of that limit? She's already coming to help me. So what happens is we've had a number of things that we've ended up not spending what we thought we were going to spend, or there have been additional cost savings that originally we weren't quite expecting. So one was the health insurance premiums for the 10-month employees. And then we had the, we get a little bit of money back, the Medicaid, MAC, Medicaid.
I can't remember what MAC stands for, but it's Medicaid funding that we get from the federal government.
Right, and that usually comes back to us, but it's not anything we can count on. It's a different amount, it could be nothing, it could be a lot. This year it was quite a bit.
It was over $100,000 that we got a couple weeks before the end of the year.
And there's just, there's no way to predict what you're gonna get, so it's not anything we can put into a budget. We had more retirements this year than we expected as well. And that has changed some of the payouts that we have. Is that correct?
Yep, those are all things that we, that we talked about, just discussing this year at the finance committee meeting.
Also, there were some, there've been some vacant positions. And we've had an increase in our interest income. Apparently the interest rate is actually increasing for some of the money that we have sitting in various funds, and that gets distributed amongst, it gets relegated to all funds, so. So it has put us in a position where we're around $700,000 under.
I'm sorry, would you say that again louder? We have $700,000 more than we thought?
Yes.
Okay.
So this, this happened last year, and we moved to approve some money to put into Fund 46. And the reason for doing that versus, you know, of course, the first thing I was thinking was, well, we, there's a lot of things we could do with that money, but we actually can't. It is money that is sitting in Fund 41 that we can't use. We can't move it around. Well, we can move it a little bit, but, sorry.
That's okay.
I got it wrong.
So I'll just, I'll just kind of summarize some of the things that we talked about. So again, like Allison said, our target's usually to be within 2% of our budget. When, with a $45 million budget, that's usually around $900,000-ish, and so, so we're there. But what we talked about was the potential to reallocate some resources to Fund 46.
46.
Yep, and we talked about this last year, and some of the reasoning behind that, that the finance committee made the recommendation last year, and then again this year, was that within our Fund 10, our goal is to avoid short-term borrowing, which, for those of you that are newer to the board, school districts really have a very defined cash flow pattern. And we receive our primary sources of income, our state aid and tax levy. And when you think about it, as a homeowner, you get your tax bill in December, you know, November, December-ish, and you start making payments in December or January. So we receive our largest tax payments in January and February, and then a couple other times throughout the year. And when we start our fiscal year in July, our first major aid payment from the state of Wisconsin comes in in December. So we have periods of time where we're, you know, paying our bills and making our payroll, but we don't have much revenue coming into the district. but we don't have, um, much revenue coming into the district. So, um, fund balance is sort of a, a public sector's, um, um, term for capital or equity like you would have in a business, and we try to maintain equity, um, at a level where we can avoid short-term borrowing so we can still meet our cash flow needs. So, and able to, so we're able to do that, and we're also able to, um, we have a pretty good bond rating, so that's kind of our, our two main targets in terms of our fund balance level. Because we're at a point where I feel comfortable that we're able to do that on an annual basis, um, we talked about, um, reallocating unspent funds to Fund 46. And what Fund 46 does is it allows us to set aside, um, resources that we can use that has to be specific to capital projects. So we have a 10-year capital improvement plan, um, Fund 46 can be used for that specific purpose. The other piece of Fund 46 is that when districts started this, um, it's kind of a new concept that was put out a few years ago, um, you could, districts, um, once they set up a Fund 46, there's a five-year waiting period to access those funds. So we started this a couple of years ago, and we will be able to access those funds starting in the 2021 school year. So, uh, one of the, 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 the main reasons that we talked about doing this last year was, as we look at future budgets, not knowing what the state might, um, you know, support in terms of increases for school districts, it provides a little bit of flexibility in that we might be in a position, if a budget is tight, instead of allocating a portion of our operation, our operational budget for those purposes, which we do on an annual basis, we could use those funds for salaries, benefits, whatever, operational purposes, and then fund those capital needs out of Fund 46 at that point in time. It's kind of, you know, setting money aside now to free up those funds at a future date. Um, we don't have to do that, but it's just, it's something that, you know, that would be available to us if, if that were to be what we were to choose to do. The other thing we talked about at Finance Committee this go-around was just the impact on our state aid. We're in an unfortunate position, well, my perception is unfortunate position, in that we're negatively aided. So the aid formula's kind of complex, but essentially, um, aid is distributed based on a community's wealth, and that wealth is determined based on the property value per student. So when you look at Stoughton, our property value per student is above the state average. There could be a number of reasons for that, um, and we continue to get higher of this, above the state average in terms of our property value per student. And so what that means is that every year we're getting less and less aid. Um, how much aid you receive, um, obviously is based on your wealth, that's the percentage that they reimburse you, but it's, look, they look at your prior year expenditures, and that's what they, they put into this formula to figure out how much of a reimbursement you're going to get on your prior year expenditures. So that's kind of the background. So if we were to say do nothing, which we certainly can do, our fund balance at the end of the year will increase by approximately $700,000. If we go forward a couple of years and we wanted to address a capital need, and the example we used at Finance Committee was, let's say we wanted to build a gym, and I don't know if we'd have enough money to do that, but let's just say in theory we would, um, we could do that out of our general fund. And in that given year, you would essentially overspend your budget, which would ultimately reduce your fund balance, but that large expense would hit your state aid the following year and have kind of a spike in terms of the negative impact. By setting the money aside on an annual basis into Fund 46, you kind of smooth that potential impact, so the point in time in which you access those funds to do that one large project, it won't have an impact on your Fund 10 aid. So that was just another thing that we talked about tonight.
Questions?
Do you need a motion and seconded for discussion?
We probably do. Uh, at this point, the chair wanted to entertain a motion.
I would move that we, um, we approve to move $550,000 into Fund 46. For vote for July 30th for the end of the fiscal year.
Second? Motion, was that your second, Joe?
Second, yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. Questions or discussion at this point? Yeah, we go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, or I, I understood that, and probably that everybody understands that, if you cannot, or we cannot take any money from Fund 46 for salary.
Correct.
Or any kind of, uh, employee benefits, right?
Correct. Thank you.
Joe?
Where is the money now? What fund is it in now?
Fund 10.
Same fund.
Yep.
Okay. And under what alternatives are possible? The only thing listed is do nothing. Is that literally true? There's no other fund that we have a choice to put this extra money into? There's nothing that feels more nimble than Fund 46 that say we could do things like Jolie's talking about?
We can, we can retain it inside of Fund 10.
Sure.
And we can then spend that money. It's, it's our money, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we just retain that money, but, uh, if, if we know that we are going to have, uh, capital expenditures in the future, um, if we pay for capital expenditures out of Fund 46, it has less of an impact on our state aid or the, the formula that negatively impacts our state aid. So, yeah, the, the two options are, we can, we can save it right now because we were under budget for the year, and we anticipate we will have capital expenditures in the future that it'll be useful for, and we'll see a benefit when we, when we use it at that point, or we can, we can keep it in Fund 10 if we expect that we're going to, what, go over budget?
Sure. So we talked about this a little bit, Joe, um, and we used the example of salaries or benefits. The only way you would reduce your fund balance by paying for salaries and benefits are if you choose to pay salaries and benefits to the point that you are no longer balancing your budget, and doing that long-term isn't sustainable. Um, so if you're in a position where you overspend your budget due to your payroll costs, typically one would think you would address those payroll costs or your budget somewhere the following year to avoid needing to overspend to sustain your programming.
I have a couple of questions. Um, the amount of the surplus is $700,000. The motion was for $550,000. Can you talk us through your reasoning on that?
Well, our thinking was, is that gave us, um, a little bit of extra money in Fund 10, um, because we were talking about some of the, um, changes that we have with, uh, different staff and positions that we have added. There were a couple of things where we had come up, um, you know, having extra expenditures for staffing, um, and it, it allows us to leave some of that money in Fund 10 to add that flexibility and the nimbleness that you were discussing while putting some money away for rainy day, essentially, so that there's, you know, if we find ourselves, I mean, projecting our budget forward, we eventually are going to end up, um, having some, some, some funding issues in, in the coming years, just when we project out our budget. This could help us avoid some of the pitfalls that might hit us when we're going to end up with our budget being, we're not going to have enough money, is essentially what it comes down to.
Sorry. Also in the Finance Committee, um, Erica expressed that, that $700,000 number is an estimate, it's not exact, and there's still, um, that, that number will fluctuate a little bit, and by going below it, we allow for anything.
We still have some. There's a lot that's going on and.
So it's a, it's a conservative way to set that money aside and make sure that we don't somehow then go over budget.
What is the current balance in Fund 46?
It's about 1.3 million.
It's plenty of lot.
How long have we had it?
I think if I had that, I'd say it's a lot.
Right, yeah, it is more than my new friends.
How long is, how long have we had the fund over?
Oh, gosh, well, if it's available in 2020, 21, we would have started 15, 16, yeah.
And last year we put in what?
700,000 last year. We've put in 300 or 350 this year. We've, since we've had it, we've budgeted an amount, and then we've had this conversation the last two years if there's funds available. Um, just recognizing that long-term, you know, that may not be something we can sustain, you know, to, to put money in there on an annual basis, but it really was looking at, um, sort of that flexibility in the future if we're in a position where we can't allocate operational resources, we didn't want to have to defer capital projects necessarily. It's just an option.
Would it be fair to say that the existence of, of this fund as a financial mechanism is encouraged really by the state for school districts to set aside money for future capital expenditures? Is that the whole purpose of the fund?
Yeah.
Is to encourage school districts to save?
Yep, I think so. And I, one of the things we, I, I wanted to mention too, we did talk about, is that we do have this facility study coming, um, coming to us in the fall, and, you know, by having saved a little bit, I mean, we're not going to be able to build a school, but, um, if there are some projects in there that, um, we feel would be really valuable that maybe we haven't identified in the past, there's some flexibility there too for some possible, um, you know, for some possible projects.
But not until 2021?
Right, which is only two years away, right? 18, 19, 20, yeah?
So hopeful, thank you.
Yes.
What if that facility study raises questions that we need to address sooner than that?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I said, what if the facility study raises concerns that we need to address prior to 2021?
That would be, well, I would be pretty surprised if we thought, like if we saw something that, of an emergency nature.
No, but there are things that people have sort of periodically brought up, facilities wise, that may or may not come to a head, air conditioning being one of them.
That's a great example of where, you know, these resources in Fund 46 might be a possibility. I would say that if that happened, if that needed to happen prior to that date, we do have our current Fund 41, um, and again, it's looking at, from a priority standpoint, we have a 10-year plan right now. Uh, we do, but that is certainly a, a fluid document. I mean, we target certain things, like we think we're going to need a roof replacement, or we're going to need some air conditioning repairs, or we're going to look at flooring. Well, when that year comes around, if you don't actually need to repair the roof, then maybe something else slides a little bit sooner, and that gets pushed back a year or two. I mean, we could certainly, I mean, that's part of the planning process, um, and I would say that we could continue to do that. I will say your Fund 10 fund balance also serves as, if you have something of an emergency nature that was unexpected, that might be a time where if you do have to overspend because of that, we still have those resources there, um, as a possibility, if it's not something covered by insurance.
Why, um, do we need to do this before July 30th?
If it's going to happen out of the 1718 budget year, the physical money transfer has to occur by July 30th, as a DPA.
What are the implications of it not happening out of the 1718 budget year?
The only thing that would happen is that instead of your Fund 46 fund balance increasing, your Fund 10 fund balance increases.
Could we make the transfer later if we wanted?
You, no. Well, it would have, we talked about this too, and that's a really good point. So the point in time that that transfer occurs, that expense, because essentially when you transfer it from Fund 10 to Fund 46, it's an expense in Fund 10. So the impact to our aid will be for next year. If we were to wait and do that next year, it would have a delay of one year in terms of our aid impact. We would have to overspend our budget next year, in theory, if you wanted to reduce your fund balance, and that aid impact would be delayed a year. Our aid trend continues to get worse every year, so if you have a spike in your expenditures in any one given year, the further you delay that, the higher the negative impact could be.
So the reason that we wouldn't incur the penalty this year is because we have the extra space in our currently established budget right now. And so we could still, like, that money's still ours, and we could still move the money in another year, but we would likely have to, in order to move that volume of money that came from an earlier school year, we would have to overstep our budget, and then we'd see that aid penalty. So it would be, would it, in transferring money, in, uh, in overspending our budget to move money to Fund 46, would that functionally, in terms of a financial penalty, be the same as just spending that money on something, uh, in overspending our budget? Doesn't matter?
It would be the same.
Yeah.
And when I say that, I just want to be very transparent. It's not that we couldn't choose to budget in next year's budget, a transfer to Fund 46. We certainly can do that. It's just that if we're saying, well, if our fund balance in Fund 10 goes up $700,000 this year, we want to take that next year and put it into Fund 46. The only way you can sort of transfer your fund balance is by essentially overspending your, you reduce your fund balance by overspending. Your, your expenses would exceed your revenues.
Other questions or discussion? Joe? Allison? Anybody over there? At this point, shall we call a question?
Thanks.
The motion is to transfer $550,000 from Fund 10 into Fund 46 before July 30th. Have I stated the motion correctly? All in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Frye is opposed. Anyone else? Motion passes. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Um, next on the agenda, we have a contemplated closed session of, the board has reason to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1982 sub 1 and 1985 sub 1 sub E to discuss board authority and compensation for SASD represented and non-represented groups. We will need a motion to go into closed session. Uh, Mr. Frye moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Joey seconds. Uh, this needs to be done by roll call, is that correct?
Yeah.
Ms. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Frye?
Yes.
Mr. Buban?
Yes.
Ms. Hoplin?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Stuckevan?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
President Sullivan?
Yes. Board members, it is 10 after 8. Let's try and convene in the upper room, uh, about 8:15, please.